Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Towns of Lacey Town meeting, September 22nd, 2022. Adipper Dorcas's meeting has been given according to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant of public clause 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Esberry Park press and the Beacon was posted on Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. We start with salute to the flag. I applaud the ladies.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Very proud for item number one, proclamation for Eagle Scout. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is one of the highest honors a member of the Boy Scouts of America received, and whereas only four percent of all Boy Scouts received this honor, and whereas in order for Kirin R. McGovern to receive this rank, he built two wooden garbage and recycling enclosures on a Barnegat branch trail in Boca River so that people had a place to dispose their garbage and keep the trail and town clean. And whereas Kirin R. McGovern, his fellow scouts, the leaders of Boy Scout Troop 56, German Georgia, Wells Mills Park employee, Robert Heitzman, as well as his family members, donated approximately 150.2 hours to complete the project. Whereas Kirin received monetary donations from Beachwood Bikes, Arlene and Bob Heitzman, Michael and Lyndell Colmari, the LaRue family, the Slova family, and the Didera family to help fund this project. And whereas his efforts have been cited by the President of the United States, the Governor of New Jersey, the State Senate, the General Assembly, and the Board, Ocean County Board of Commissioners, whereas the Mayor and Township Committee wishes to commend and congratulate Kirin R. McGovern on receiving this high honor, and whereas the Mayor and Township Committee would like the accomplishment and dedication of this young individual to be an example for all those involved in scouting and thank him for a project well done. Now therefore, I mark thy call, Mayor of the Township of Lacey, on behalf of myself and the Township Committee, honor Kirin R. McGovern for his outstanding accomplishments and encourage other scouts to follow his example.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Let's get a picture.
Move the microphone.
Thank you.
There you go.
There you go.
You can do it.
I did a few.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Very nice.
As is customary, others to township meeting. We are all very proud of you and of many Boy Scouts who come through this room as Eagle Scout. So I'd like to go from member to member, and I'm sure they have some nice things to say. Mister, who parked in my spot?
Mister McDonald.
Mister McDonald.
Well, I had the distinct honor and pleasure of attending his court, his Eagle Court, and I spoke for about seven minutes there, and I had a conversation with him. He knows, he knows that what it will do, it will open up doors for him that he hasn't, that he will not realize until he's about 25, 27, 30 years old. He's going to be a great one, and I wish you nothing but the best of luck.
Thank you. Very, very proud of you, and what I could tell you is, tell your story to your contemporaries, your students, your friends, other young people your age. Do you need some of whatever you have to rub off on some of them as they're all in their social media and their TikToks, and you've got your head screwed on straight? And you're, you're an honor. You're one of many, many, many come through our town. So it must be something great with the parents, the teachers, the dads, the moms, just everybody in our town. You're, you're one of many, and we're very, very proud, and we know how hard it is. So thank you.
Mr. Kennas.
Congratulations, Kirin. It's a very, I should be very proud of your accomplishment, and I always like to just acknowledge that the support you must have had from your parents and your family to, to get to that point, to become an Eagle Scout. So congratulations.
Mr. Newell.
I just want to say how proud we are. It's always such an accomplishment, and just looking at all those things on you there, all those badges, we know how hard you worked to get where you are today. So good, good luck, and God bless you. That's a great thing. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Kirin, while you're one of many who come here, if you read the proclamation, four percent, you're a distinct group, and I'm sure as you get older and go on with your life, you'll continue to be in a distinct group. So congratulations, congratulations, teach and work staff, and thank you very much for coming here tonight.
Thank you.
Item number two, S-1368 liability insurance for business owners and rental unit owners.
S-1368 was signed into law on August 5th of 2022, which requires all business owners, owners of rental units, and owners of multifamily rental units to maintain specified amounts of liability insurance for combined property damage or bodily injury, two, or death of one or more persons in one accident or occurrence. The owners of those properties are required to now file annually a certificate of insurance with the municipality in which the business or residence is located. So we need to establish an ordinance to do this, and also we are allowed to establish a reasonable administrative fee. So that's what I'm asking you, if we're going to establish a reasonable administrative fee or not, and of course then we'll have a, yeah, I have a draft ordinance almost ready to go here for Mr. Connors to complete.
Who would be doing the administrative? Would be, we need to know.
No, it's going to end up being the clerk's office. That's what I've kind of figured out from speaking with fellow administrators and clerks that.
Well, my question, have other municipalities already used to do this ordinance and?
They're all kind of working on it.
Yeah. Let's see where they're going to go as far as instituting that.
Chris, do you have any idea?
I do not. It has raised a lot of confusion and concern with municipalities, obviously. Previously, any registration requirement would have been with the Division of Local Government Services, ECA. This legislation essentially removed that obligation and put it upon municipalities. But, so since it's a mandate, they also allow you to charge a fee, so, but a lot of municipalities aren't even aware of it, actually. It will take effect, the municipality's requirements will take effect 90 days after enactment, which was in August, so that means sometime in November, the requirement would be there. So, you know, it's just, obviously, another aspect of municipality must undergo that the state previously did, you're shifting the burden off to the state, notwithstanding the fact that the increase in the cost to local businesses now will be required to carry a higher level of insurance at a greater cost, not only to landlords, but also to businesses, which is just going to be based on.
Mayor, if I may, I, I guess it was Wednesday morning, Tuesday, Tuesday morning, I guess it was, whatever day it was, at the Ocean County Mayor's Association breakfast, I sat with the mayor from LaVelez and his new administrator there, and they don't know what they're going to do. We had a long conversation up there, you know, which where it's really going to hurt everybody, not only us, but Seaside and all those summer rentals, they got to carry all this stuff. So it's, it's, it's a mess. I don't, I mean, charge them, I mean, say 50 bucks, but that's, that's kind of steep.
May I?
Okay. Well, you know, what I would issue is, what kind of volume are you talking about? We have an idea of?
Well, you, just look at all the businesses you have town. I mean, you have the plaza owner plus then all the businesses.
My two cents?
I'm sticking five dollars.
Yes, I think you're two cents from a totally unbiased.
So my first thought, when I, when this is on, well, a couple, who, I don't even know who this is targeting. Everybody carries insurance. I mean, this has got to be less than one percent of the people. These are business people, like, they have to carry, if they have a mortgage, they have to carry insurance. I can't, so I can't even imagine who this is being enforced upon. But the second thing, I was like, I was going to vote no, right, and just not do it because I don't think it's fair. But then, am I reading this correctly, that if the town doesn't enforce it, then there's a fine to the business owner of between $500 and $5,000?
That's the fine. If you fail to comply, you would give a summons, just a court, which the judge can then find you anywhere from $500 to $5,000. That's the standard in the state statutes.
Right.
And that's what all of our code book eventually will set for any violation of the municipal law.
So wait, can I vote no? Chris?
Of course you can vote no.
Well, I know you can't vote no, but I'm like, you know.
You carry insurance, right?
Yeah, you have to carry insurance. You have a mortgage.
Does your insurance beat the minimum here?
Yeah, those minimums are actually not high, but, but still, it's the point of it. I mean, I don't, but if you have a mortgage, you have to carry it.
One more level of.
Two more level of bureaucracy, it's completely unneeded, so.
I agree with you, yeah.
It's more burdens on the township collecting. It doesn't even matter what.
And you have to have them readily accessible when somebody comes in and asks for it. So now, how am I cataloging them? How am I?
It's going to be, it's going to be an O for Bolton.
Yes. There you go.
And you have to be able to, be able to put your finger on it, that's one, two, three basis.
Does that business comply? You know, you might get competition.
Which is likely an insurance agent.
Yeah, right.
Here comes another software.
So if the town doesn't enforce it, what happens?
Well, you.
The division might, I don't know.
Yeah, right.
Division of Local Government Services might end up sending penalties to us. I'm not sure.
Right. And then when you have to fill out the form of compliance.
Best practices checklist?
Best practices, that's something else.
Should I have to answer that?
So they'll get you somewhere.
There's a software vendor coming down the street, right?
Some of the software, there's really no need to have a software for it, because it's a certificate that they're going to send you from their insurance company. So there's no need to invest in software for it.
Somebody can put your software in. You know, that's.
Too much government.
That's it.
Too much government.
Right, well, think about the fee, like, listen, I was thinking only five bucks, to be honest with you. I mean, I know it's not.
Yeah, that's what I say, too.
That's what I was thinking, five dollars.
Well, it's going to cost us something. Is it going to cost us more than five dollars to handle these things?
Depends on what the transaction was.
Well, you should, so they're probably.
You've got to figure out what the transaction's going to cost us, and then that should be the cost, too.
So what's going to happen is, is it's going to come mailed in from the insurance company with the check or without the check, where somebody's going to walk it in. You know, we used to charge for landlord disclosure statements, and it was five dollars. And it's just a matter of you send them the form, they send it back to you with the check, we put it, we deposit, deposited the check, we filed the form. I mean, it's really kind of simple, the way we used to do landlord disclosure statements.
Pretty applicable, okay.
I just don't, you know.
Sounds good.
And when most people not filing, you know, yes, so now Steve does the fileless form, and the only way he's going to get a fine or a penalty is when somebody comes in to request a certificate of insurance, and I have to say he doesn't have it on file. So they're going to have to issue, you know, do a summons against him or a notice of violation, not us, the person who wanted it.
It's like if it was charged.
Okay. Five dollars?
Crump, it's five dollars.
Okay. Anything else?
We're probably going to be the only lowest ones in the state of New Jersey, but I just feel that this is a very silly law.
We're pro-business.
We're very silly law.
That's right.
I have nothing to add on.
Move it.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
We are going into our brittle township meeting. If you would like to make your exit right now.
Let's get out of here.
Because it's really not exciting.
I would just like to say that his parents would have been here, but tonight is back to school night.
Usually it is tonight, you're right.
We were supposed to come.
Oh, how nice. It's very nice.
We were privileged.
Yes, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
But good luck with everything.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Township of Lacey Township meeting, September 22nd, 2022. Adipper Dorcas's meeting has been given according to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant of public clause 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Esberry Park press and the Beacon was posted on Bolton Board showing the time and place of the meeting. We start with salute to the flag and call them to silence.
I applaud the ladies. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, first reading ordinance, 2022, 32, amending an existing ordinance that determines salary, wages, and compensation for multiple titles.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance to title the Northside Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations for the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is a sliding scale for our part-time inspectors in the building department, so that would be a part-time building inspector, plumbing inspector, electrical inspector, and fire inspector, and the part, and the substitutes that fill in, and the deputy municipal clerk's salary. Motion.
Move it. Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have two. First reading ordinance, 2022, 30, amending chapter 335 so as to amend this section related to electric vehicles charging station to comply with Pinesland Commission.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Article 3 of Chapter 335 entitled General Regulations to Authorize and Encourage Electric Vehicles, Supply Service Equipment, and Make Ready Parking Spaces so as to amend Section 335, 22.3(c) entitled approvals and permits to comply with the Pinesland Comprehensive Management Plan. So I have to, since this is a zoning ordinance, it has to go out to the Pinesland, the county, and the five adjoining municipalities, and they sent me a denial letter, and we have to make these amendments since it affects the Pinesland zone and to comply with their comprehensive management plan.
Thank you. Motion.
Move it. Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Item number three, first reading ordinance, 2022, 34, establishing chapter 115 authorizing use of third-party dispersment aid service agent for payroll and other specified services.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, establishing chapter 115 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacey entitled Third-Party Payroll Dispersment, authorizing the use of a third-party dispersment service agent for payroll and other specified services purposes. This is a regulation that we must adopt since we do not do in-house payroll and our agency checks, which go out to Social Security and so on and so forth. So we have to establish a electronic dispersment control for payroll purposes.
Move it. Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have a four. Second reading ordinance, 2022, 28, regulating the statutory authority of Verizon New Jersey Inc. to use various public roads for its local and through lines and other communication facilities.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, regulating the statutory authority of Verizon New Jersey Incorporated, its successors and assigns to use the various public streets, roads, avenues, highways, and other public ways in the Township of Lacey for its local and through lines and other communication facilities and prescribing the conditions thereof. So this is currently an expiring 50-year lease. This is just renewing the lease for another 50 years, so we're talking 2072 gang for Verizon to utilize, of course, the right-ofways.
We'll be here.
Now, you hate me, don't hate me. Second reading, open the floor.
She won't be here either.
I won't be here.
Then motion, close the floor.
Second.
Then motion, close the floor.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have five. Second reading ordinance, 2022, 29, authorizing the acquisition of an easement on portion of Block 822, Lot 10.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of an easement on a portion of Block 822, Lot 10 from Steven and Ivy Rizzo in accordance with NJSA 4812-5A1. This is a, approximately 1,500 square foot piece of property that's on the one, I believe it's the easterly boundary line of Block 1822, Lot 10. We have a drainage pipe in there. This is something that was put in back in the 80s. We never required the easement, and we are now requiring the easement.
Second reading, open the floor, public comment.
See, now make a motion, close the floor.
Second.
All favor.
Aye. Move it. Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number six, second reading ordinance, 2022, 30, authorizing the purchase of Block 1853, Lots 40 to 46.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of Block 1853, Lots 40 through 46 on Bell Street pursuant to NJSA 4812-5. This is being sold, being purchased for the fair market value of $42,000. This is in our Phase 3 of our Walters Development Affordable Housing Project.
Second reading, open the floor, public comment. See, now make a motion, close it.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Item number seven, second reading ordinance.
Second gas?
Yes.
Okay.
Second reading ordinance, 2022, 30, authorizing the purchase of Block 1853, Lot 7 and 8.
In order to the Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the purchase of Block 1853, Lots 7 and 8 on Calvin Street pursuant to NJSA 4812-5. This again is another parcel for our third phase of our affordable housing obligation. We are purchasing in the amount of $34,000. This does not come out of the municipal budget, it comes out of our Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second reading, open the floor, public comment.
See, now make a motion, close the floor.
All favor.
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have a resolution, 2022, 269, designating Field 1 in Gilly Park.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, designating Field 1 in Gilly Park as the Repetti Field. The Lacey Girl Softball League had requested us earlier this year after the passing of Mr. Repetti to name the Gilly Field 1 in honor of Andrew Repetti, who was of large impact on the Girls' Softball League, and his daughter, in fact, is president right now. They will be doing a presentation, I believe, this weekend to the Repetti family with this, and in order to properly name the field, we needed to adopt a resolution. They did not want to be present this evening for a for this.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number nine, resolution, 2022, 271, awarding a contract for vehicle equipment for new police vehicles.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Elite Vehicle Solutions for vehicle equipment for the new police vehicles. This is in the quantity of five. This is for the Explorer Interceptors that will hopefully come in sometime next year in the amount of $49,871.20.
Move it. Second.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, I have a resolution, 2022, 271, authorizing a refund for tax overpayment.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to refund a tax overpayment on Block 1,024, Lot 18.01. The amount to be refunded is $3,311.23.
Move it. Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number 11, resolution, 2022, 272, authorizing replacement of a lien on Block 420, Lot 1.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up the property located at 25 Nautilus Boulevard, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $93.08.
Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number 12, resolution, 2022, 273, refund of deposit monies.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposit monies helping the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number 13, resolution, 2022, 274, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution, Township of Lacey County, Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $1,182,583.95.
Move it. Second.
Mister McDonald?
Yes.
Mister Curatola?
Yes.
Mister Juliana?
Yes.
Mister Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes, item number 14, motion to approve the township meeting minutes since September 8, 2022.
Move it. Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Item number 15, motion to approve office meeting minutes since September 8, 2022.
Move it. Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Motion to approve. Item number 16, motion to approve the rental license for Jersey Coast Anglers and Royal Order of Moose, 1907.
Move it. Second.
All favor. Any add-ons?
Yes, I do have an add-on this evening. It's a resolution number two seventy-six. It's a resolution attached to Lacey County, motion to state, New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2022 taxes due on a property granted, the one-hundred percent disabled veterans exemption, and refund the resulting credit balance. This is for Block fourteen eighty-seven, Lot fifteen, and for Block four four six, Lot sixteen. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth.
Yes.
Mr. Curto.
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano.
Yes.
Mayor Dykoff. That's all I have to add on this evening.
Comments? Mr. Curto.
Yes, I just want to report on some of the good work that our, this summer, that all of our employees always do, but in particular this evening, our recreation department. Whippet sales, the whippet is now paid for itself. It's gone from about eighty-four, eighty-five thousand to over a hundred thousand dollars by entertaining people, children, adults, seniors, and summer campers from all around the county. We're still the only municipality with an above-water water park, and it was a very good investment. I know Community Mayor McDonald and I were down at the league, and, excuse me, Deputy Mayor McDonald was very instrumental in getting it, and it's been something good for our town. I would also say, listen, the Repetti family, he deserves that park. He's a great family and fine service. I'm having a meeting tomorrow with Assemblyman Rumpf, and I just, I talked to him today. I received an email, and I just wanted to inform everyone about what our Ninth District does. Again, Senator Connors, Assemblyman Rumpf, Assemblywoman Gove, in particular, New Jersey, Affordable New Jersey Communities for Homeowners and Renters Property Tax Relief Program. And it's essentially the homestead rebate that's being returned. There are some watermarks to meet with specific regard to some household income, but it looks like a lot of people will be eligible for this, and we ask, the Ninth District asks you to visit NJ Division of Taxation's anchor website for particulars and deadlines and applications. There's many different ways to apply, including electronically, to ask our Lacey families that are overtaxed in this time of high and exorbitant inflation to take advantage of that. In closing, I just want people to know, be very careful, especially if you have young kids with some of this fentanyl and these pills that are marketed to kids. They look like Smarties, they look like candy. More people between eighteen and forty-five have died of fentanyl, not overdoses, listen, poisonings, poisonings, than have died of COVID, car crashes combined. So it's a very real thing. Car wrecks, suicide, and COVID combined, it's a very real thing, and I know our law enforcement's been very proactive, but it is flooding. Two milligrams of fentanyl's nothing to kill. It's recently in Nogales, Arizona, you say, hey, how far away is Nogales? Well, every town's a border town. If you talk to major law enforcement, they know what's going on. So that's not an indictment against any particular group. It's saying that there's rules and guidelines that protect our people. If you have kids, have this uncomfortable conversation, talk with them and help them out. Lacey Day, twelve to four, and then bright, though, always one of the finest to attend it, and all of the county and all of the state. Please go, enjoy what's beautiful about our town. Enjoy. I hope I see you there. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. You probably seen it in the papers, the health insurance numbers have come down, and they're in the mid twenties. That's the rating. Now, as I said, along with township meetings obligation, I worry about our employees who are going to have to pay through the nose on this stuff all of a sudden. The other part of this that really, really hurts me is that the governor made a deal with the state employees that their health insurance, same health insurance, only goes up three percent, and the state will eat the difference. Not fair, it's not right, and it's wrong. Our employees work just as hard, if not harder, than the state employees. They got families just like the state employees to take care of, and it's just not right. And I know that attending the usual County Mayor's Breakfast earlier this week, that was one of the main topics that we talked about. I also want to talk about the property tax rebate. Community Curto did a great job on that, but just so everybody knows, oh, it's just a rebate. Well, your income is under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're entitled to a fifteen-hundred dollar tax rebate, okay? But the difference, one caveat is you have to be in that home, whether you rent it or own, by October first, two thousand and nineteen. So if you've moved between that time, you're gonna have some problems. Again, check it out, check it out. And because of inflation and a fluke in our law, our minimum wage is going up for our lowest employees. It's an eight-point-nine percent increase. It's gonna affect the township next year because our summer employees, our kids, guess what? They're getting paid more. It is what it is. Inflation is the ultimate killer. It's just, it's just bad, and it's not gonna get any better in 2023. Mayor, that's all I have.
Mrs. Giuliano.
I'm not gonna talk a lot because, as you can hear, I'm a little frock, and actually, I'm moored, I'm moored today. But anyhow, I just wanted to say, we had a fantastic weekend, this past weekend, the Lacey PBA had an Oktoberfest out at Argos Farm. It was well-attended. It's so nice to see the support for our police department out there. It was well, well-attended. This Sunday, the Moose Lodge, we have a lot of volunteers in this town, and we have a lot of what I call paybacks. The Moose Lodge, every year, has what they call a Give Back Day, and this Sunday is their Give Back Day. What they do is they call the dive team, the EMS, the police, the fire, and give them all a check. And I know that doesn't sound like, you know, everybody says, oh, it's easy to write a check. No, every little bit helps, you know, and every time they do this, it's just another contribution toward our volunteer organizations especially. So if you have an opportunity, you're available. Sunday at two o'clock, you're welcome to stop by at the Moose Lodge. Thank you.
Mr. Kenneth.
Thank you, Mayor. Just three quick messages. So every year, we have our books audited, and it was recently completed, and there's no irregularities in any of our accounting, which means that all our, all the money we collect is spent well. None of it's missing, so it's good for all our taxpayers. So we passed.
Not yet, anyhow.
We also received a check from the Ocean County Department of Solid Waste Management for fifty-four thousand dollars because our citizens recycle so much that that's the rebate that we get back from the recycling center at the county. And finally, the pickleball courts are now open at Hebrew Park and ready to be used.
Here's my announcement.
So first, I have a public service announcement. New Jersey National Gas will be replacing gas, main, and services on streets in Lacey starting November. It will split in two phases of work, with each phase lasting approximately three months off for a total of six months and being completed back-to-back. Phase one will include Brookwood Lane, north of Sunrise Boulevard, Dorwood Lane, Burks Lane, Juniper Lane, Chestnut Lane from two hundred north of Sunrise Boulevard to Sunset Drive. Phase two will include Oak Lane, Willow Lane, Spruce Lane, Hemlock Lane, Maple Lane from Sunrise Boulevard to Sunset Drive, and a stretch of Sunset Drive from Oak Lane to Brookwood Lane. The work will be completed by gray supply. Further notification will be given to the affected residents before the project begins. I'm gonna kind of segue on what Mrs. Giuliano talked about, volunteers giving back. So I was fortunate to attend a function at the Lacey Elks called the Army of Hope Picnic, and basically it's to benefit veterans. And they have a breakfast, and they honor Gold Star families. And you might ask, what's a Gold Star family? Well, it's interesting. I Googled it, like every smart person does. It's an honor no one wants, because if you're a Gold Star family, you're someone who has lost a spouse, child, parents, sibling, or others who died in service to our nation. So of course, you don't want to be one, but I can tell you that seeing the support group that they had there was heartwarming, and meeting some of those families from all over the state and Pennsylvania as well was very nice. And they had Elks from all over the state, and anyone who is involved in how Elk Lodge knows that we are the shining star of the Elks, not only in New Jersey but in the nation. Everyone talks about the great organization we have, and of course, anyone here who's been involved with the Elks knows that we are. So once again, thank you. They're givers, just like the Moose, just like the many other great organizations in this town. But now, I hope you blow up on the comment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I apologize for the breach of protocol. Could I just inform our residents when the flu clinics are for this?
No, I'm not.
Appreciate it. I should have had a durm on my comments. Again, I apologize. I just want our folks to know, and thanks to Administrator Verret. September twenty-seventh, Tuesday, Lacey Community Center from ten to one, flu clinic, and there'll be COVID vaccine there, as well as, I believe, shingles and other nurses there. Ten twenty-one, Friday, Lacey Community Center, one-on-one North Main Street, ten to two p.m. Tuesday, November twenty-second, Lacey Community Center, ten to two p.m. Thursday, Lacey Community Center, December eighth, ten to two. And lastly, Tuesday, December twentieth, Lacey Community Center, two p.m. to six p.m. So we have five different times here over the next three, four months. For every person that gets a vaccine, there's six people that don't get it. I think it's a quadra-valent vaccine this year. Protects you against four strains of the seasonal flu. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you for the time.
I just want to say, it is at the old community hall, so not to get confused with the new community hall.
And one more thing before the public. I missed it. Oh, no, it keeps going in and out, low sound.
Okay, I'm not, it's recording now, so.
No, it was just on there.
Hey, what are you doing? Sorry, you want me to speak? Yeah.
My name's Renee Van Der Herf, from one-twenty-six station. I apologize for the last meeting because I was definitely unprepared for the chilly reception.
Well, I made sure, you know, I made.
I know you, you have all right.
And I explained to your wife, you know, about.
Right.
The opposition, I wanted to give you a heads up, and I thought, you know, listen, took me a little while to find your name and address.
Yes.
But I did, so I don't know why you weren't prepared. You know, you had come up, you were certainly prepared the many times you came up and complained about it, so I wanted you to be prepared when I told her that.
I know.
You're getting a lot of pushback, and as you saw, that's only the tip of the iceberg of what we heard from social media and email.
Sure.
So I can, so, you know, again, I'm prepared. I don't know.
Well, I had a long day. I was tired. You know, it's been very busy, so.
Yep, I understand.
So I wanted to sit there and straighten the record out on a few things, but before I do, I wanted to give you a little bit about my personal life. I've been a conservationist since I was a young kid. I hunted fish, studied animals, mutual and haws, wild kingdom, Jacques Cousteau, watched all those programs when I was a kid. Showing age now, of course. And I still do it at this point. I grew up in Pine Beach, and my sister and my brother-in-law had a farm out Pleasant Plains, in which they had chicken coops. Now, of course, they were commercially raising chickens for eggs, and they sold the wallacks and other things. So one day, while I was playing out my chicken coops with my nephew, roosters running around outside of chicken coops, back and forth in front of chicken coops. I said to my brother-in-law, Alex, what's up with this rooster? He goes, oh, that's a decoy. Decoy? He says, yeah, roosters like it for two things. He says, a decoy for predators, so they take, take the rooster instead of taking my chickens, and if I need more chickens, I put them in a reader coop. So I cited that tonight instead of sitting there and trying to beat up all these chicken owners, which I don't want to do anyway. I want to give the pros and cons to all of it, and dismiss some of the myths that go along with all this from this last meeting. So let's talk about the good parts about roosters, okay? Breeding if you want more chickens, no doubt about it. Sound the alarm if predators are present, you know, they're around. Possibly sacrifice itself to a predator, however, probably unlikely. They don't call them chickens for nothing. I witnessed a gopher eating chicken feed in my neighbor's pen, the one that I've been complaining about for several meetings. The rooster had a hen for huddling in the corner as far as they could get away from it. Rooster didn't try and chase it, the gopher away, attack it, crow, or anything else. So a gopher's sitting there eating on her feet, and they're all huddling in the corner, scared of this gopher. So the last meeting, the game of wildlife, I made a statement about the annoying rooster that tasted pretty good. He put him in a pot, okay? Obviously, he got tired and burned it. I guess that's his way of doing it. He tried to make a case, as did others, about roosters as a protector of the flock. Hens are actually more aggressive to them than roosters are. When they have chicks around, they'll actually gang up on a young predator or a predator that's inexperienced and chase them away. So to dispel the myths about roosters, they crow a lot, obviously. That's one of the big problems that we have with them. They're good for breeding, probably good for education if you, you know, have kids, and you want to show them how animals are and stuff like that. But I think the bad points outweigh the good points on this. Constant calling, all day long, every day, from sunup to sundown, every twenty to thirty minutes. More so if there's another rooster around. Now, in my neighborhood, I have another rooster in that block. So he starts calling, sets off the rooster behind my neighbor's house, and they're going back and forth all day long, okay? Primary reason for rooster to crow, to serve as dominance and mating rights over the hens. That's the reason they crow. Tell them, oh, the roosters, don't come over here, you're picking a fight. That's pretty much. Secondary reason, something that serves them. It could be as simple as a door slamming, or any other little noise or whatnot can make a rooster crow. So it doesn't have to be set off by predators, it can be set off almost by any noise. Myth about predators. Rooster is no match for red-tailed hawk, a coyote, a fox, a weasel, or a raccoon. Red-tailed hawks hunt during the day, coyotes hunt during the day and night, foxes, weasels, and raccoons are nocturnal. So misinformation about roosters protecting the flock from nocturnal predators is definitely false. That's definitely not right. A raccoon, for instance, will reach right through chicken wire, and if the rooster, the chicken's close enough, he'll grab that chicken and take it piece by piece alive right through that wire, eat it right there in the spot. Sounds gruesome, and it is, but it happens.
It'll be fun.
A rooster may try to fend off a hawk or a coyote, but if they really want him, he's a guy. Chickens are good and bad. They're a good source, a bad source of eggs. I would not sit there and, ever sit there and stop somebody from raising chickens for food, you know, for eggs and whatnot. But fertile eggs aren't useful, so you can't have a rooster in the hen house. Otherwise, you're gonna end up, have you guys ever heard of channeling eggs? That's an old circle, right? Now they use machines, and they use lights. But that's the way you tell them that eggs are fertile. Look for blood spot in the egg, so on and so forth. So if you gotta have a rooster around, you have to keep it separate from the hens. Otherwise, your eggs are gonna be. Educational tools in general. Myth number one, you have to buy six chicks from your local tractor supply. It's not another disinformation. You only have to purchase a minimum of four, and I verified that by the tractor supply employee actually went there. Myth two, you can't tell chicks sex with vinyl. Actually, there are at least six ways to sex chicks right when they come out of the egg. And if you're responsible chicken buyer or chicken owner, you're gonna want to have chickens, not roosters. So you're gonna sex your chickens. And one method is difficult, the other methods are not. So tractor supply, I talked to them about that too, and the employee interviewed me, said, no, they sex their chickens. Every once in a while, a rooster makes it through. So getting three or four roosters out of a clutch of chicks is also commensurate information. Okay, crowded conditions, non-maintenance of waste are a couple of reasons we need ordinance to limit the amount of chickens that people have. Give words of correct, limited conditions, proper setbacks, not to disturb neighbors. We have a project, there's four hundred backyard chicken owners in this, in this, in this Lacey Township. Approximately four hundred, right? Isn't that what they said?
Where'd you get that number, sir?
That was at the last meeting. They were talking about that, and I saw on social media. They said they got about four hundred, all right? We have about thirty thousand residents. That comprises a one-point-four percent of the population. I researched other towns. Almost all of them have forbidden roosters due to noise, and quite a few have made chickens as backyard pets, completely due to multiple problems. Now, I've checked a lot of different towns in my research, and believe me, I'm a tamed research. That's what I do for a living. So I went and looked at Fairlawn, I looked at the only places where chickens and roosters are allowed pretty much are farm animals, which is natural. You have a farm, you're gonna have, you're gonna have that kind of stuff. Okay? The other problem with chicken pens is they attract predators and other wildlife due to it's a food source. Now, you know, you have twenty chickens in your backyard, of course, foxes and raccoons and other predators are gonna be looking around saying, looking for a free meal. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-nine, and when I say that my neighbors decided to get chickens in 2020, whether by coincidence or due to chickens, we now have gophers. I've never seen a gopher in the twenty years I've lived here, not all of a sudden I have gophers. Okay? And I'm a gardener, and you know what a gopher, a gopher, a garden, right? So I'm out there with half a hard trap, right? And that's just damn house, right? So, you know, so far as the roosters go, they really shouldn't be allowed in residential areas, right? They're noisy animals or other noisy animals that disturb residential peace. And if noise violations are broken, of course, we can address that through the other ordinances that we have. Grandfathering in and of roosters is just gonna cause more problems than it's gonna solve. The average chick will live for ten years. So they have a brand-new rooster, all right? Three years down the road, dies, they get another rooster. Oh, that was the rooster we had before. See where I'm going with this? It's not, it's not a, you know.
Mr. Senza, could you please keep your voice down? We're trying to conduct a meeting here. Show a little respect for this day, okay? Thank you very much.
You can be talking, and someone else is talking.
Annual veterinarian wellness certificates shouldn't be a problem for a reasonable, responsible chicken owner. I mean, after all, you know, you have to have, you have to take your dogs to do that, you have to take all your other pets to do that, right? I mean, you can't just sit there and not get them rabies shots or whatever else you need, heartburn and everything else. Now, tractor supply sells five varieties of chickens that range from two ninety-nine to six ninety-nine per bird. Four of the most expensive birds would be twenty-eight bucks. Twenty-seven to thirty-four dollars for feed every four months. So yearly, between one-hundred thirty-six and one-hundred sixty-four dollars to keep four chickens. So a twenty-dollar registration fee for a household for the rest of your chickens, I don't think is at all, unless you're talking about twenty, twenty dollars per chicken. Where are you in New Orleans? What are you talking about with the registration fee? Is that per household or is that per chicken?
That's per household.
Per household. So I don't see where that's gonna broke anybody. If you can spend that kind of money on chickens, which isn't much, you can afford twenty bucks for a registration fee. Chickens aren't legally defined as pets per New Jersey state law. They are ducks, guinea fowl, and other farm animals. They're all considered foul and farm animals. So to sit there and try and make them pets, yeah, okay, you know, you want to make them pets, that's fine, you know, but you still have to follow the rules and laws and ordinances of your town. You can't just say, well, now they're a pet. Oh, I'm gonna take my chicken, my pet chicken, and I'm gonna put it in a cage, and I'm gonna go onto the airplane and fly to, you know, to Philadelphia or something like that. Nope, they're not gonna let you do it. So what I did was, before I go into the next little topic, is in my research, this is one of those things with tractor supply, can I approach?
Sure.
I'll leave this here with you, okay? It's got the feed on it. Now, I just read it out before you review when you start looking at this thing. All Wikipedia, have, what do's and don'ts are protecting roosters, or chickens, has sex chickens, and why roosters grow, there's even articles on that. And the top sheet is four other neighbors in my little block who, that are upset with this rooster problem. Me makes five. That's just the little block. So when you guys start considering all this, take that into consideration, because I know you're gonna revisit this. I mean, you can take it for now, but I implore you to sit there and revisit that stuff. Now, last thing I'm gonna talk about is the noise ordinance that I know has been passed or went through the unit. Has anything changed in the noise ordinance for animals that I should be aware of? I mean, I looked at it this afternoon, and I didn't see anything different. I know you mentioned something about a noise ordinance officer or something like that, or?
Yeah, we've had one before too. So basically, our noise ordinance was, our prior noise ordinance was not compliant with state law, so it was not enforceable. So the state has a model ordinance that you're required to adopt. So we don't really have any flexibility in it, because they have to review it before we adopt it. So they did approve our model noise ordinance because it was in compliance with the state regulations.
Okay, so in other words, if I don't sign a complaint against my neighbors, it's no problem at this point?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I'll talk a little bit about that neighbor. The last time we had a meeting where I had mentioned this before, I told you that they got rid of some of the chickens and roosters, and they had a little pen, they had them all pushed up in this little pen. Well, now the pen is three times the size. There's an ordinance, I have to go over to Mr. Downey to talk about, the now rooster, chicken coop is above the fence, which can't be above the fence, and I know that already from past experience. They also have ducks again, guinea fowl, I mean, what's next? You know what I mean? What's next? A peatuck? They have two gazebo's in their backyard. One of them has pigeons in it. They're using the gazebo as a pigeon coop. I mean, it's gonna be a regular farm in this, in this particular, in this particular household. They also have a pool in the backyard, a tent, you know, a shed, right? All this stuff, and an outside tiki bar, plus, you know, all these chickens. I mean, now they're fenced in, but they're, you know, they're all right up against the back fence, and there's no setbacks or anything else. So that's another reason I would employ you when you start looking at this ordinance again. Take all these things into consideration. And, you know, I'm not trying to sit there and take these people's chickens away. I understand they want eggs, especially in this economic situation that we're in, you know? I have no problem with that. But just gotta be limited to that. You know, people hate change. I hate change. You guys hate change, right? There's only two things in life you can count on. Things are gonna change, and one day you're gonna die. Neither one. Neither one...
Or they pay taxes too.
No, 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 there's plenty of people that don't pay taxes. There's plenty of people that don't pay taxes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone? Anyone? You're all, yes, sir.
I didn't see the agenda advance.
I sent it to you this afternoon.
I didn't see it. Sorry. Question for Mr. Tony Rizzoli, Sunrise Boulevard. Mr. Caratola, all the shots that are going to be open to the public include also the flu shots, the COVID shot, the shingles shot. Is there any other shots that will be offered at the community center to the public on a date you mentioned?
I'm not aware of that, but if you leave me your cell phone number, I'll find out from my colleagues.
All right, but those three are definitely going to be there on those dates, the flu shot, the COVID shot, and also the shingles shot.
Yes, but I don't know about the shingles shot.
It's two.
Right. So I just spoke with our, I was at Captainson the other day, spoke to our Division of Rotary here in this, in our hometown. The shingles shot, out of all the things we do, and we're the largest county health department in the state, the shingles shot is fairly expensive. I think the price point is $159. It's one of the only things that we charge for. Virtually everything else is gratis, even dental work for some folks. So leave me your number, let me call you tomorrow and I'll give you the information from right from my nurse colleagues.
Are you looking for some other...
I just wanted, I just wanted people to know.
I don't think there's like any other kind of vaccines or shots out there that anybody's giving out.
Well, there's monkeypox and other things that don't fall, you know? But the other thing is, is people who had the previous shingles shots from years ago, okay, it's no longer considered an up-to-date shot. And that's something else that the public should know. This is the new shot, it's two, and it's, it's rather expensive. So, okay. I just wanted to bring that up as a public service question, I guess for Veronica. With this liability insurance for owners and rental unit owners, I know, I brought it up last time, one time I was here about people who don't report that they're landlords, okay? You said you had no way, you know, to have any repercussion back to them for not reporting that they are in fact landlords. Okay? That being said, and what was said tonight about the amount of money that the state is looking, okay, to get, is it feasible that the state, and it may be up to Mr. Connors to answer, that the state may come back to the township for not doing some kind of due diligence?
Of course they can.
And find us?
Of course they can, and I did say that tonight. You might not have...
Right. So what other plan do we have to put out?
We have to at least make an attempt that we're doing the job. I can't help it, if you, the property owner or the landlord, didn't comply, then summonments can be issued against you for not complying. The state can't find me for doing, if we're doing our due diligence to try and collect them, I can't force a business or a property owner to file with me if they don't want to do it.
No, that I understand, but to further protect us from the state, I'm just wondering, could we put in place in the ordinance somewhere that people who fail to report and are found not to report be fined for not reporting?
It's already in there, under violations and penalties.
It's already there, okay.
Right, yeah. It's already in there. It's in all of our ordinances.
All right, I don't want the town paying because we didn't do something that we could have done to...
Right.
Okay. I have a question about the acquisition of the easement. I had experience in the past in another town where there was an easement put in, and it was a drainage ditch and, and a drainage pipe. And what happened was, the land after it was put in failed.
Forget it, sorry.
Of course I'm sorry, it's working, that's just a course I'm sorry. It happened to me before. And the land around the drainage pipe failed. So my question is, where that drainage pipe is going in, that landowner, he will be made whole if the land fails around the drainage?
That drainage pipe has been in since about 1984.
Okay, so it's not new?
No, it's not new. And it has been replaced already. It has been replaced, I can't tell you what year, but it was replaced probably in the 90s sometime.
You can't tell them what year?
No, I can't. It was in the 90s. And what happened is, is that the land was always vacant. And until it was being sold by the estate of the former owner, it showed up, and when they did the survey, and there was nothing on the maps that we had ever acquired the easement. So if the pipe is in good condition there, the bulkhead is in good condition.
All right, but the land itself, if it was failed, we...
Right, so if the pipe collapses, which would make the ground have a sinkhole, yes, we would make the landowner whole.
Okay, that's all? Basically, all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else?
Seeing that motion closed.
My name is Malala Prior, I'm from Bedford River. I've been here since approximately 2000.
What's your last name, please?
Prior, excuse me, I, my voice, P-R-O-Y-O-R. And I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm going to be running for the Board of Education, and I also want to thank you for what you do. And trying to kick this town away, let's just keep it on the up and up. Kind of was going down, and I see trying to get a little bit better, so just keep working together and...
Thank you.
I'll see you again soon.
Thank you very much.
Regina Desant, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I want to pick up where I left off in August. From what I understand, the planning board approved the old number of units for the M&amp;T loss at Lacey at 256. While I still do not believe this is a proper number, the total number of units coming to Lacey total has been reduced from 486 to 472. I also understand that New Jersey DEP cap for permit was approved, and I requested a copy on opramachine.com. If anyone's never been to that website, I highly suggest checking it out. I've used it many times, and all the information I requested is there for continued public review, and that is the beauty of the technology built into Oprah Machine. It holds all the uploaded data so that anyone can view the requested public records at any time. The information arrived today lightning fast. Thank you to the clerk's office for providing the permit so quickly. Let's hope and pray this project works out, but I really feel it's much too intense. This coming Saturday, September 24th, in addition to being Lacey Day, the New Jersey Run for the Fallen will be passing through Lacey Township at approximately 11:45 a.m. near Gilly Park, going to the high school to honor Fallen Lacey High School graduate, Nick Giglio, captain, U.S. Air Force. On Saturday, October 15th, there will be a meet the candidates afternoon in the Lacey Library Meeting Room from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Come by, say hello, ask questions, and present any issues. And then, on another subject, I seem to have purchased lawn signs with incredible magical powers. They've been able to grow human legs and just walk away. I've had 10 such signs run away from their designated locations in the past few weeks. But I patrol my signs regularly, day and night, so if someone's helping with their walking abilities, please don't touch. eBay has some really great products, but these were not advertised as walking signs. Thank you.
So I just wanted to counter about the M&amp;T.
Oh, yes.
Just a little bit of history on that. You do understand that that originally was approved for 74 age restricted townhomes, but because of people, unfortunately like you, who fought that, it's now, you know, down the road, it's 256, kind of, you know...
You're throwing me in there, huh?
Yeah, I am, you know, because basically you fought everything in this town.
It wasn't that.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
But you misspeaking.
Okay, I'm speaking, so let me, you know, you can personally respond, but, you know, you fought the Home Depot. You fought Wendy's because it was near your parents' house and they liked the smell of it.
Never did, my parents did.
You fought, you fought Seabreeze at Lacey, you fought Walmart, you fought Sunrise Beach, you know, but, but basically, you know, it just goes to show you, can you imagine if the Home Depot was not built? That would probably be on the board for more housing. So, you know, there's a reason, you know, people come, it's cyclical. So right now, unfortunately, the age of age restricted townhomes, or it was going to be towns after that, have passed, and what's the demand? The developer has the demand for apartments, one bedroom, two bedroom. So that's what happens, you know? So just want to...
More to grow our housing as opposed to...
Just want to point that out, that again, that was originally slated for 74 age restricted townhomes.